Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January Joint Authority and Canal Board Meeting. As those of you who have joined us, you'll see most are participating via video this morning for weather and other assorted reasons. With me are fellow trustees Nakandry McKibben, Trainer and Balboni. Trustees Cress and Pacente have been excused. Gil and the NiPA team, for the most part, are present in white plains. Joe Kessler is in our Buffalo office and participating via video as well. So we will zig and zag our way through and navigate the agenda over the course of the next couple hours. This is, as always, is our regularly scheduled meeting, which has been duly noticed, and I'm pleased to call today's meeting to order. As always, we'll start with a motion to adopt the agenda, all of which my fellow trustees have had the opportunity to review. So unless anyone has any amendments to the agenda, I'd ask for a motion to adopt our agenda as presented.
No move.
There was a motion and a second and a third and a fourth in there. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Motion carries. As we typically do, we will start our meeting in executive session. Whether we can navigate it, we'll navigate it as quickly as we possibly can so that we can return to public session. Therefore, I'd ask for a motion to conduct the executive session to discuss the financial and credit history of a particular corporation, presumably ours.
No move.
No move.
All right. And a second embedded in all of that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. With that, we're now in executive session. Welcome back, everyone. Please to resume the meeting in open session. If I could ask for a motion to do so, please.
No move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. We're back in open session, and as always, no votes were taken during our executive session. Contractors list, we were all polled in advance, as we typically do. I think everyone's responded and provided any conflicts, unless there's any updates to that. I'm assuming there are none. Great. Okay. As always, there's a variety of consent agenda materials that hopefully you've had a chance to review. Unless you have any questions or want to have specific dialogue on any of those items, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No move.
And I heard a second as well. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. We'll navigate into the first of our discussion agenda topics. And Gil, you're up and at 'em.
Good morning, Chairman Kamel, Board of Trustees, member of the staff, and to the public who are participating or listening in to our board meeting, first board meeting in 2019. Welcome, everybody. It is customary for me every January of every year to give a review of our activities and our select accomplishments last year, and I will do that right now. As you know, we have been implementing our strategy. We've been calling NiPA 2020. It's 2019 now, and so we're kind of at the back end, backstretch in the implementation of our strategic plan, and our goal will be to finish strong this year. Some of the key activities in utility operations and accomplishments, we have made tremendous strides in implementing and modernizing our infrastructure. For example, our SmartPath, which is the rebuild of our Moses Adirondack Transmission Lines from Messina to the Adirondacks, about 85, 86 miles. In the fall, our siting application called Article VII before the Public Service Commission was deemed complete, and we anticipate approval later this year. Also, last year, $99 million contract was approved by you, the board, to begin this work, and so far, we've expended about $12.5 million. Again, we are on the path of really making that project going. LPGP, Lewiston Pump Generating Unit Life Extension and Modernization. We have, that's a multi-year project to be completed in 2022. We're about 75% complete. That's a $460 million capital investment that we are making, and we have expended $297 million to date, all on budget and on schedule. Transmission, life extension and modernization. As you know, we own a third of all high-voltage transmission in New York State. That is a multi-year program all the way through 2025, and we're about 50% complete. And we have expended about $299 million out of a total budget, an investment of $726 million. Again, great progress, good performance, on time and on schedule. On our digital utility, we have started all the investments. Now we're monitoring about 25,000 sensor points to assess the health, the real-time health of our assets, generation and transmission, and we plan to put a lot of sensors and build our own communications backbone to really fully realize that goal of being a digital utility, and that should be completed by 2019, 2021, I'm sorry. So just a theme in terms of utility operations under the leadership of Joe Kessler. We are investing, we are building, designing, and modernizing our assets for the benefit of our customers. Great progress. Commercial operations, that performance in terms of reliability and availability that utility operations have been providing, commercial operations under the leadership of Sarah Salati, they've been monetizing that performance, and they've been doing really well. Last year, they exceeded the gross margin target of our electric supply business. NiPA won Segment A of a request for proposal, a competition by the New York ISO, a grid operator, for two transmission segments, one north of Albany, one south of Albany. We won Segment A, which is above Albany, and that will be a major investment, one of the, I would say, you know, investments that really has not happened in the transmission system of New York State. Today, before you, we'll also be asking your approval for a large-scale renewable. I don't want to steal the thunder of Marie Berninger, who will be presenting that item to you today, which was also presented in last week's Finance Committee meeting, but that is a first-of-its-kind large-scale renewable project in the Southern Tier. We're really, really excited. It's one of the many that we will expect to bring before you over the next few years. Economic development, we continue to create low-cost, clean economical power to help catalyze job creation and capital investment in our state. Great job by Keith Hayes and company. Again, about $7.2 billion in capital commitments by our customers that also support 210,000 jobs. Again, great year, banner year in terms of helping to spur economic development, especially in upstate New York. We also renewed all of our supply contracts with our customers last year. So we now have agreements with them, multi-year agreements, that provide stability and provide certainty to us and to them. So banner year also when it comes to commercial operations. Customer Energy Solutions, we have increased the top-line growth of our energy efficiency and customer-sided renewable business. With that, we have a challenge of making those businesses at least break even, including our cost of capital, but we are on the right track in making that happen, and I'm encouraged again by the top-line growth and also the various success introduction of new products and services to our customers. We are also going to continue to build our startup energy services. We call it NYAM, New York Energy Manager, and that is according to plan. We are shifting to a new, more robust platform in partnership with a Silicon Valley company called C3 IoT, which is a software platform provider that provides artificial intelligence Moonshots, we launched three moonshots last year. I want to credit Bob Lurie heading our Strategy Group and our multi- or interdepartmental team who helped in this initiative. Evolve New York, again, that's our foray into electric vehicle space. We are going to be building fast chargers, 200 fast chargers along our highway corridors and help build model EV communities and fast charging hubs at our airports, and those projects are underway. Very, very encouraging, and again, is a critical tool to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our state and to lead by example. The next moonshot that we launched last year was flexibility. When I say flexibility, really, it says demand response and energy storage. And just to get going, we are going to install a 20-megawatt storage in one of our substations upstate, and there are a number of other projects with our customers and at the distribution level to do large-scale tests and learns, and hopefully, by being first out of the gate, we can help shape the regulatory rules and the market signals so that we can foster and really grow storage, not only for NiPA and its customers, but for the state as a whole. Offshore wind, as you know, the governor has announced increasing the goal in offshore wind, threefold in his State of the State speech. What we did last year was we studied in very much detail the experience of the Europeans who are first in terms of offshore wind. They have installed several offshore wind in Europe, and we studied almost, I would say, every project, got all the lessons learned, and we're now sharing that with our regulators, with our market operators in New York, with the utilities in New York, again, to help figure out what is the best way and what are the best approaches for offshore wind development in our state. So good success in launching our moonshots on top of our strategic initiatives. We are also in the process of fully integrating canals. So I would say, last year, we fully integrated canals into the NiPA operations. We have been making a lot of improvements, especially in the area of environmental health and safety, and the safe and secure operation of canals. I want to give credit to the Canal Corporation, Joe Kessler, and the operations team, Kim Harriman and others, who really have put in the time working with the canals team to fully integrate them and to begin the full re-imagination of the canals, and more will be coming from that plan. In terms of financial performance, last year was a stellar year for NiPA. You will hear today that we have overperformed in terms of our net income. Our fixed cost coverage ratio is still way above the 1.75, that is the median in our class. And again, once again, last year, our credit rating was affirmed one of the strongest in the public power space. Credit to Lee Garza and Bob Lurie and that entire team for really helping navigate this path for the power authority. In 2019, our governor announced some very aggressive goals. He's calling it the Green New Deal, 100% clean power by 2040, meaning carbon-free power, electricity by 2040, with ultimately a goal of removing all carbon from all sectors of the economy. Up to $200 million in port infrastructure for offshore wind, $1.5 billion initial investment in large-scale renewable, and ensuring a workforce development program and a just transition as we go through this complete transformation of the electric and energy sector in our state. With that, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, where we want to finish strong to implement our NiPA 2020, I think we're poised to do that. But at the same time, NiPA 2020 is next year, so it's also time to create a new plan for NiPA. We are calling it initially NiPA 2030, but obviously, that is a very long horizon. So we will have interim outcomes along that way, from, you know, 2023, 2025, 2028, so on, until we reach 2030. But it's good to have a, you know, to have that lighthouse in front of us to, and all the associated outcomes about what we want to be, what NiPA should look like in 2030, and that will, that process has begun, and we will have something to bring back to the board later this year. So overall, if I can just tie that all together, last year was really a great year for NiPA. You can look at it from an operations perspective. You can look at it commercially, you can look at it financially. So the team, I credit my executive management team and all of the employees and our colleagues at NiPA and at canals for working hard, working as a team, working together to produce a great set of outcomes for 2018, and for having a good starting point, a platform, to even do better going forward. We also, of course, on behalf of all of the employees of NiPA and canals, we want to thank the board for their oversight, for their advice and counsel, for their nudging, and for their support, cheering as we work last year and as we go forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, great recap of what you've said, and I know as a board, we wholeheartedly agree, was a great year, really one where all legs of the stool, you know, really well-integrated and well-positioned for the future. So kudos to you, the entire team, and more importantly, the broader organization. Any questions, comments from anyone for Gil? Aye, terrific. Aye, thanks very much, Gil. Lee, Gil set you up here for a strong finish to the year. Once again, we're going to finish nicely compared to our budgeted targets, but give us a drive-by catch-up, please.
That was a fantastic setup. Thank you, Gil. I appreciate it. And good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees, members of the public, and fellow colleagues. I'd like to pick up a little bit where Gil left off, and I'd like to say, as we embark on the future, and particularly this year, we're in terrific financial performance and terrific financial health to support the organization in that regard and all its strategic objectives. What I'm going to do this morning is provide a snapshot on what the preliminary results of our net income performance is for 2018, and I'll leave you with one takeaway here, and that takeaway is that our financial performance remains very strong and in line with our AA credit rating, which, as Gil mentioned, was recently affirmed by all three rating agencies. A fundamental to our financial health is our net income, and as we've said multiple times already this morning, we finished 2018 strong. And based on preliminary results, our full year looks to be meaningfully higher than our budgeted amount of $76.9 million. We're expecting to have final net income of approximately $103 million. Our positive results were primarily driven by higher generation margins as well as lower net interest expense. Furthermore, we managed our operating expenses to be within 1% of our budgeted amounts, and all that taken into consideration that we undertook new strategic initiatives and investments this year, as well as economic development projects that were, that all required additional expenditures that were not included in the 2018 budget. So we were able to accomplish more with the same amount, I would characterize it as. I'll turn my comments to the numbers here to give you an overview. Preliminary net income for 2018 is expected to be in the range of $97.6 million to $107.6 million with the value of $102.6 million. This positive result is driven by $17.5 million in higher margins and $17.6 million in lower net interest expense. As I had mentioned, it's offset by approximately $9 million in higher operating expenses. The positive margin variance is primarily driven by energy margins. We saw hydro volumes come in about 6% higher than we had originally budgeted, as well as strong resource management by our commercial team in capturing market opportunities around asset management and monetizations of excess natural gas inventories, and you'll hear more about that from Sarah later on in the meeting. Further bolstering our positive net income was lower net interest expense. Approximately a third of it was related to non-cash mark-to-market gains that we have in our reserve portfolio. The remaining two-thirds is associated with lower budgeted interest expense because we've delayed some of the issuances that we were going to make last year into future periods, including 2019. Lastly, I'll talk a little bit about operating expenses. We're expecting operating expenses to come in approximately $9 million higher than budgeted. This is within 1% of our overall budgeted amount, and net-net, these higher expenses were driven by a combination of two things. Increased O&amp;M associated with us undertaking select new strategic initiatives and investments, which we expect to yield value to NiPA over time, and economic development projects, including the acceleration of work at canals. So that's the end of my prepared comments, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
All that sounds very consistent with what you forecasted when we were last together, a month and a half or so ago. Everything rises come year-end and things wrapped up as anticipated.
That is correct.
Great. All right. Any questions or other thoughts for Lee? Super. Thanks very much, Lee. Appreciate it. Well done.
Thank you.
Joe, from Snowbound, Buffalo.
Thank you, Chairman. I hope everybody can hear me okay.
If you didn't shovel your way out, you're going to have to shovel your way back in later today, so.
That's what I understand. I've already been in touch with my wife, so I'm telling her how to start the snowblower.
All right. Good man. Way to delegate, Joe. Way to delegate.
Thank you. I learn it from the best. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, trustees, members of the public, and staff. Just want to give, Gil and Lee did a great job talking about the initiatives and the performance for 2018. My report's really going to be more about kind of the day-to-day performance of utility operations. Daniella, could you advance the slides, please? So our dashboard has been cleaned up for a little bit more aesthetics to make it a little easier to read here, and these are the four key areas that, you know, day-to-day the utility operations staffs judges themselves by. Generator market readiness is basically our generation effectiveness. That number was close to target. We do have a variance on there. That is based on the incident that was significantly impacting that at BG, where we had that breaker failure just late in the year. That target will be adjusted to take into account that outage in 2019, and in March, we'll bring to you the new measure for that. We are also doing very well in transmission system reliability and environmental incidents. Of course, our infamous DART rate, which we are always very concerned about, is that 0.97 for the entire organization. That does miss our target of 0.78, which we still stand by as an achievable target and not a lot of tension in that target, but we do see that as achievable. We are going to revisit that to make sure that we are right based on the nature of the work that we're doing going forward, and of course, our philosophy is no incident is acceptable. So that represents 18 incidents, which is actually one less than we had last year, but we do miss that with a slight variance. Next slide, please. So this is a recap of what we actually did in that generation, and the reason I bring that to you is that it does show that generator market readiness is a measure that we are concerned is not really representing well, how well we're doing generation. With the different impacts of the energy prices and the system impacts and our ability to do ancillary services, in reality, we actually exceeded our budgeted target for what we forecasted we were going to do in total generation of energy last year. In fact, we have to validate this information, but the northern region, which is really the Messina plant, set a record last year for generation. So we are doing very well. I'm going to be working with Sarah Salati's team early this year, first quarter this year, to revisit this because this generator market readiness target that I showed you on the previous slide really represents kind of an antiquated way of looking at the measure and the way we're doing generation. It was solely based on the price of energy times and our ability to generate. There's a lot more nuance now in the way the system's being operated, and we want to make sure we're putting the right tension in our organization from a performance standpoint to drive the right behaviors and at the same time, be able to communicate well to the trustees and to the public where we stand on generation. So I'll be working closely with Sarah and her team on making that better sense for you on that. So I only wanted to present this slide to show that, you know, despite our yellow and generator market readiness, we in fact were very available, and there was a lot of nuance in that. We were very successful in generating what called upon by the commercial operations team. And with that, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Terrific. As always, our ability to do and lean into and step up to the strategic opportunities predicated on continued strong work that you and your team do operationally, day in and day out. So well done. Thanks for explaining away that 59 basis point miss, and I'm glad we're going to refocus on the DART rate, so we get rid of the stop signs there as well. Good report card and appreciate the time. Any other questions or thoughts for Joe? Okay. Sarah?
Good job.
Everyone keeps referencing you, so you're better clean up today.
I like the closer. I don't know.
Knock it out.
Okay, yes. All right, so let's get right to it. I think I'm going to, good morning.
All your arrows are going green.
Sorry?
Is it all your arrows are going in the right direction?
Yes, exactly. You asked us to replace the arrows, so now we're just doing shapes, sort of triangles and circles.
Nice.
Anyway, just to reiterate what, you know, Gil said, as well as Lee and Joe, we had an excellent year across NiPA and specifically too on the wholesale and retail side of our business. You'll see, you see that all the arrows are green, right? Our customer usage, what we targeted was essentially met, the level of generation as well.
Hold on a minute. Hey, Dennis? Dennis, can somebody need some background audio? All right, great. Go ahead, Sarah. Sorry.
Right, and then, of course, we have the electric prices in the market, which were above what we targeted. We managed our fuel, in line with what we targeted, obviously being able to capture arguably a higher spark spread. But what's most important here really is to note the gross margin, which we're introducing in this particular report, and that is really how we're managing overall our assets being bid into the market, as well as the contracts that we have for fuel, as well as our ability to, you know, manage our hydro forecasts. So, there you'll see that we were 20% above our targeted gross margin, and that primarily is driven really by a very close coordination between utility ops and the commercial team in managing our assets and the water flows that we have at BG and St. Lawrence, timing those where we're able to buy out of the market when prices are low and hold our water in reserve and generate when prices are higher. Additionally, we renegotiated some gas contracts, which reduced our exposure to gas prices Then, as Gil articulated, economic development, another very strong year. There you see the cumulative results of the program were over 80% allocated for our Recharge New York program. More specifically, the 2018, as a result of the strong work that was undertaken by the economic development team, we negotiated contract renewals for several of our economic development programs, which essentially has us committed to retain and create 210,000 jobs over the next seven to 10 years, locking that in, as well as investments of $7.2 billion capital commitments to New York State. So, again, the power authority is supporting the economic development and growth of New York State very specifically and proactively. On the energy efficiency side and supporting the governor's agenda, right, the extremely progressive and aggressive agenda now that came out with the Green New Deal, our energy efficiency projects, where our business there, you'll see, also at the request of the board, accelerated the customer investments, essentially the projects that we're doing for our various customers that are improving their energy efficiency footprint, as well as enabling them to secure incremental renewables, customer-sided and otherwise. And the non-utility revenues are in line with that, because again, we get paid as we deploy capital and implement those projects. On the operating expense side, again, as Gil articulated, higher than we would like and not in line with our budget, and that's something that, again, I'm focused on in this coming year to ensure that our revenues are increasing, but we're maintaining our costs. That number also incorporates some one-time, non-recurring charges, so it really is not fully reflective of the ongoing operating costs of the business. And finally, I guess I would just say...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Sorry?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Please, if you mind. So, in the customer investments, you're about 25%, 30% above what the target was. Can you explain that variance? Why the size of that change?
Sure, I mean, it's really, yeah, it really comes... Sure, it really comes down to us bringing new projects into the pipeline and implementing them, and that's as a result of the sales that our BD group is doing and just the implementation and project management by our team. We also had projects that were in the pipeline, which we were able to accelerate the implementation of. So, it's execution, it's both development and bringing new business in and acceleration and of an implementation of existing projects, so it's strong delivery.
Okay, thank you.
And I think along those lines, one number that isn't up here, but, and this also goes to the strong coordination between our energy efficiency, as well as our business development team, but we signed a record number of customer investment contracts in 2018, over $360 million of work that we'll be doing for our governmental customers, and over the course of the next couple of years, again, supporting the energy efficiency targets that the governors set out for us. And within that, too, again, I don't have any pictures in this one, I was trying to keep it simple, but we evolved our various other clean energy solution offerings, street lighting, supporting municipalities and co-ops in converting to LED lights, supporting their evolution to smart city technologies, as well as expanding and evolving our services around solar plus storage at the customer sites, and helping some of our customers reach and target carbon-neutral footprints.
One question, Mr. Chairman, if I had, one question I had, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
And Sarah, I think you've sort of explained part of it around the operating expense, and I know you try to be very disciplined around that, but it is a significant number. Is that in large part because we went after more business, and so, or is the cost of going after those customers increasing? You said they were one-time charges, but it's not clear exactly where that fell. Is there a change in appetite of our customers around the energy efficiency business?
Well, we continue to look to obtain, you know, more business, so it is reflective of an increase in securing more customers and bringing new services to market. It also is reflective, like I said, of a portion of one-time, non-recurring charges that comes as a result of just managing $250 million of capital projects, where, you know, we're managing implementation contractors who need to deliver. So, in some cases, we hold reserves, and that has an impact, you know, also hits the P&amp;L. So, it's a combination. It's just the natural result of doing large, managing large capital projects and the results from that. Does that answer your question?
I think so. But you don't expect that to be the case next year, because we'll continue to manage these large projects going forward.
Right, yes, and that's what one of my focus areas, right, is to really look very closely, because we obviously are increasing our revenues. There is a natural increase or not directly linear, you know, result that would come from operating expenses increasing, if you're increasing, you know, your BD and increasing the revenues that are coming into the business. But in the end, we're really taking a hard look at how we are delivering and managing our expenses, and I anticipate that we'll see a reversal of the trend going forward. And that's my, that's what I'm focused on.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
And I think that's all I have, unless anybody has any other questions.
I appreciate the recap, and it's great to see the beginnings of some positive momentum. I know over the last couple, three years, as we've sharpened our focus on the commercial ops area, that the tractions have been slower in coming than we had hoped or anticipated. So, some of the dialogue interaction reflects that, so we're looking forward to an even stronger outcome in 19 with the benefit of the stability and the foundational work that you and the team have done. So, appreciate the recap. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, subset of Sarah's comments runs to economic development and our continuing work there to allocate power for the benefit of jobs and investment. Keith, you ready in the queue to recap the awards that you're recommending for us?
I am. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, NIPA staff, and everyone in attendance today. Our first two items request that the trustees approve an 850-kilowatt allocation of preservation power to Upstate Niagara Cooperative, known in the region as North Country Dairy, which plans to install a new production line to increase annual yogurt production at its North Lawrence facility, and a 350 KW allocation of replacement power to 3M Company, which is expanding its Tonawanda facility to increase production of laminated sponge projects. Excuse me. Combined these allocations would support the creation of 35 new jobs and a capital investment of at least $17.4 million. A current preservation power customer who is in compliance with the contractual commitments, Upstate Niagara is looking to install an ultrafiltration filling line to produce a unique, low-sugar Greek-style yogurt. When fully operational, the new line will help increase annual yogurt production at the plant from 45 to 63 million pounds. The project will also provide a boost to Upstate New York dairy farmers, as the milk used to produce this yogurt will come from their farms. 3M, which currently has four allocations of NIPA power, also in compliance with its contractual commitments, will expand its facility by almost 3,000 square feet to install a new packaging line in order to produce additional sponge products currently outsourced at other locations in North America. The item also requests that the trustees authorize a public hearing on the proposed contract for Upstate Niagara. A public hearing is not needed for the new 3M allocation. These items are submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any questions.
The yogurt business, I don't know if you're familiar or not, Batavia, Keith, has been in the news of late, that has had some downs as well as ups. The yogurt business is more stable than that might indicate, and the investment here reflects, you know, confidence in, you know, that line of business or the opportunity there?
Yes. That's an accurate assessment.
Okay. Questions, comments? Otherwise, it asks for a motion to approve the project as recommended?
So moved.
All right, there's a second there. Karen, I'm sure you caught it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Keith, next.
Okay, the next item is with regards to Northern New York Economic Development Fund. On November 14, 2018, the Northern New York Power Proceeds Allocation Board recommended that one business, Chris Catello and Chris Catello LP, doing business as From the Heart Cabinetry. The award is some benefits totaling $95,000. The related project, which you received in your board books, is tied to the creation of five new jobs and more than $885,000 in project investments. The trustees are asked to approve this recommendation, and as a reminder, to date, about $1.6 million in fund benefit awards have been approved, and there's currently approximately $2.5 million available, of which approximately $600,000 is carved out for energy-related projects. Again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
All right, unless there's any other questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the award.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, Keith, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, our committee reports. We have three committee meetings preceding this morning's discussion. Finance was last week, and as has been referenced a couple times already, meaningful and in-depth discussion on a large-scale renewable project award. Tracy, you want to pick up the ball there, or ham and egg it between you and Marie?
Sure. The finance committee met, as you said, last week on January 24, and we adopted the minutes. There are two motions that we're putting before the full board for recommendation. The first is the large-scale renewable project award. That is a part of the voluntary participation of NIPA in the clean energy standards to support the state's energy plan, and Marie Ferninger will actually provide a detailed presentation regarding that and the PPA that will be awarded out of it. The second item from the committee involves the release of funds and the support of the residential discount program that's created in connection with the Recharge New York Power Program, and Lee Garza will provide a fuller presentation on that item. Again, both of these items will have been, we're recommending to the full board for approval.
And both Marie and Lee, you're able to keep your comments briefer than detailed, right, because we've discussed them in depth at the committee level, so this is just a bit of a drive-by for the benefit of all?
Yes, certainly.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Chairman Komaal, trustees, members of the public, for this opportunity today to present to you a large-scale renewable transaction that will take a major step forward in our clean generation moonshot strategy and advance the clean energy standard. Specifically, we propose a 20-year power purchase agreement with the 290-megawatt Canisaeo Wind Project that will be developed by Invenergy and will go into service at the end of 2020. This is an outcome of a competitive procurement we launched in summer of 2017, consistent with our longstanding policy to procure large-scale renewables from the private sector. It sought a public-private partnership under the structure of a long-term contract with new large-scale renewable projects. The scope was broad, including technologies of wind, solar, hydro, biomass, at various term options. Industry response was very strong, including 132 projects proposed by 51 developers, and following a comprehensive evaluation, the Canisaeo Wind Project was selected as the best value for NIPA and its customers among this competition, and will be the only award resulting from this RFP. This transaction is a strategic opportunity for NIPA. First and foremost, it provides value to our customers. The pricing is very competitive, based on the strengths of the project, its developer, the fact that NIPA is a credit-worthy off-taker, and the project seeks to capture federal production tax credits. This will allow NIPA to pass on savings and achieve price stability in serving renewable energy credits to our customers. It will also take a meaningful step in achieving the clean energy standard. It will produce Tier 1, achieve 19% of the 50% by 2030 clean energy standard gold for NIPA customers. Of course, the governor has challenged the state to achieve 70% renewables by 2030, which makes a step timely and important. The contracted project will represent 3% of NIPA's generation portfolio and is the first wind power resource that will produce Tier 1 REX for our customers. Let me share a little more about the project itself. It's a 200-megawatt wind farm located in Steuben County, New York, and here, I'm showing you a project rendering. Some of the competitive strengths, of course, include price, its good location, which will contribute to economic development in the southern tier, it's a reliable wind resource, and project development is on or ahead of schedule in various aspects. The strength of the developer is also very good. Invenergy is a top wind developer in the industry with over 12,000 megawatts of wind developed in North America and over 600 in New York. They've been operating wind farms for over 10 years at one of the highest availability factors in the industry. Let me next discuss the transaction structure and how it serves our customers. As a foundation, NIPA's full supply contracts have a long history of providing cost-competitive energy supply solutions that our customers continue to value, and this transaction strengthens that value-added service. In particular, it responds to an emergent need to supplement our supply offering with renewable energy credits through customer supply contracts. So, if we look at the diagram, the contract between the Canisaeo Wind Project and NIPA is a full-bundled PPA for energy capacity and REX at the PPA price. The energy and capacity will be transacted in the wholesale markets, and the REX will be delivered to customers via supply contracts. In conclusion, this is a timely and strategic opportunity for NIPA to deliver value to customers and advance the state clean energy standard, and accordingly, we ask for the board's approval of this contract.
Well, and more importantly, you know, as Tracy already said, we had a great in-depth discussion at the finance committee, and the finance committee is recommending approval by the full board. So, unless there's any further discussion or questions from the board, I'd ask for a motion to approve the project as recommended by the finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Great, thanks very much, Marie.
Thank you.
Lee, if you can give us a real condensed version of the funds, the release of funds, as we've already reviewed it in committee level, and you presented it publicly there, so we don't need to repeat it again.
Very good. So, every time this year, we come to the trustees and ask for their approval to release funds related to the residential customer discount program. Last year, we came to the committee and, pardon me, last year, we came to the board and asked them for a release of a similar $30 million amount. This year, we're again requesting a release of funding of $30 million. This program, just to give you some perspective, serves approximately $760,000 businesses and nonprofits, and in return for providing this very competitive power, the businesses have in turn committed to over 377,000 jobs and over $31 billion in capital investment commitments. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments and answer any questions if there are any.
And again, it was discussed and evaluated at the committee level, and as Tracy said, finance committee recommends approval of the release of the 30 million, so... approval of, uh, the release of the 30 million, so, uh, unless there are any other questions, I'd ask for a motion to, uh, support the committee's recommendation and approve the release.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried, thank you very much, Tracy, thank you, Marie, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Um, cyber and physical security committee, uh, met earlier, uh, this morning. Uh, Michael, you wanna give us, uh, a debrief on, uh, the discussion and outcomes of, uh, of, of that dialogue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, there were no votes taken in this session, but what, recent intelligence estimates have continued to affirm that bad actors will continue targeting the energy sector. The methods and means by which they will do this continue to evolve, and especially troubling is the application of artificial intelligence to a threat vector and platform. In this dynamic threat environment, NIPA has adopted a proactive, lean-forward and active-defense posture completely appropriate with this environment. I'd like to thank Casey Carnes and his entire team for recognizing the opportunities that the digitization program has done for us to have enterprise-wide visibility on the threats and the ability to monitor them real-time. That's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Um, no question, uh, I think we all continue to be very pleased, uh, impressed with, uh, the work the organization, you know, doing under Robin, uh, Casey's, uh, leadership. Uh, I realize, uh, it's an area where you can't ever be too, too impressed. It's a lot of jeez, uh, you can't ever be too impressed, uh, given the, the realities of, uh, you know, the everyday threats and the thousands, uh, of exposures we all have, but, uh, yet we're very pleased with, uh, the continued great work that's being done, so. Alright, thank you, Michael. Um, our, uh, last committee meeting was, uh, governance, uh, Judge chaired that earlier this morning, uh, given Trustee Cressa's, uh, absence. Um, can you give us, uh, a report, please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, the committee met this morning, as indicated, and received a report from Joe Grislo, Vice President and Chief Ethics and Compliance Officer for NIPA, uh, and the Canal Corporation, and, uh, the Ethics and Compliance Program. The committee also adopted a motion to recommend to NIPA and Canal Boards the adoption, uh, adoption of the chairman's committee appointments, uh, for 2019. Therefore, I move the adoption of the chairman's committee appointments.
Um, everyone's had a chance to review that as well, uh, unless there are any questions, I would ask, uh, for a motion to approve, um.
So moved.
Thank you, Michael, second. I think I heard a second from Dennis, thank you very much. Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any oppose, any opposed, motion carried. Alright, um, that concludes, uh, our agenda, uh, for this morning. I appreciate everyone's, uh, time and participation from, uh, remote and varied locations. Uh, thank you, uh, IT team for facilitating and coordinating, uh, all of that. Um, we are back together, uh, again in a couple of months, uh, March 26th is our next, uh, scheduled board meeting. Uh, we look forward to, uh, seeing everyone again then. Uh, have a great day, uh, stay warm and safe travels. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.